At the meeting, if you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. My name's Anthony Doyle. I'm the town moderator. Today is Tuesday, May 2nd, 7:00 PM. This is the annual town, excuse me, the annual town meeting for the town of Dalton. I would note that the warrant has been properly published. I can see by the return of service from our town constable that it was published at Dalton's Public House, Dalton Restaurant, Greenridge Variety Convenience Store, U.S. Post Office, Country Corner Package and Variety, and the town hall bulletin board, and that was done at least 14 days, seven days prior to today's hearing. Joining me on the stage tonight at my far right is Tom Zesson. He is town council. Heather Hunt is our town clerk. Members of the select board, Mark Strout, Robert Bishop, our town administrator, Tom Hutchison, the chairman of the select board, Joe Diver, and to my left, William Droshin, chairman of the finance committee, and Tom Irwin. First item as we normally do, I'd ask, pardon? First item that we normally do, I'd ask for a motion to waive the formal reading of the warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. It's a long warrant. Please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. Sue Doucette, 10 Renee Drive in Dalton, and I move that the articles numbers 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 28 be moved first on the agenda in order to ensure maximum participation by the citizens of Dalton.
There's a motion on the floor to move certain articles to the front of the warrant. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Yes. Ms. Doucette, would you repeat those articles?
14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 28.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed by saying no? Okay. Passes by majority. Article 14 deals with the accessory dwelling units as proposed by the planning board. Is, who's going to present that motion? Okay.
I'll present the motion, then you can roll.
Thank you.
I move that the town adopt a bylaw allowing the construction of accessory dwelling units as written in the town meeting warrant.
I second it.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding Article 14? Yes, sir. Oh, I'm, thank you, Al.
Excuse me. Larry Gingras, Sunnyside Drive, Dalton. I am opposed to this article. I don't think it should be passed. I think it's laudable that you want to create in-law apartments or mother-in-law apartments, but accessory dwelling units, I don't think are in the best interest of the town. Basically, it's taken one-family housing sites and changing them to two-family housing sites. My own house in the neighborhood I live in won't be affected because it's protected by restrictions on our deeds that limit us to one single-family home on each lot. I, you know, it says affordable housing, but to me, that's just a gimmick phrase because any housing in Dalton is difficult to get it to be eventually affordable housing. It means that you can put up to a 900-square-foot house on any lot where you can meet the coverage rules and driveway access. That changes the character of the town, in my opinion. I have no problem with that part of it that allows you to modify an existing dwelling for so-called mother-in-law apartments or in-law apartments, but I don't see any reason why we should allow secondary construction on what have traditionally been single-family lots.
Mr. Moderator. The town planner, Grant McGregor, is prepared to present both articles 14 and 15. Okay. Thank you. Al, if you would just hold on one minute, we have Grant McGregor, our town planner, who has a few comments to make on this article.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Grant McGregor. I'm the town planner here in Dalton. I've been here since July of 2021. I'm really enjoying the experience here so far, and I felt welcomed, so thank you all for that. I'll be briefly presenting Articles 14 and 15. Both are zoning bylaw proposals or amendments. Starting with Article 14, the accessory dwelling unit bylaw proposal, it is just that, it's a proposal, meaning the use is not currently permitted in Dalton. It's important to note that most zoning bylaw proposals and amendments require two-thirds vote in the state of Massachusetts in order to be passed here at town meeting. This article, this bylaw proposal as written requires a simple majority vote tonight to be approved under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. And a little bit of background on how the research into these units and the use came to be, it predates my time. The planning board first received written support from a resident for accessory dwelling units back in 2019, and in October of 2020, the planning board began researching those units. And then fast forward a little bit until December of 2021, the planning board formed a subcommittee to further research the units, looking into towns of similar size and character to Dalton, such as Montague, Greenfield, Great Barrington. And they took some of the text that was included in those towns' bylaws for those units and nuanced it to, this is the work of the subcommittee, they then nuanced it to fit the needs the best, to the best ability in Dalton. And then the text of that proposal was sent to the planning board, at which a public hearing was held on the matter, and some public comments were received by the planning board, both at that hearing and in the three, three-week-to-a-month period following the public hearing, at which written comments were received. The planning board felt that there was sufficient comment at both of those, at the public hearing and from the written comments received, that residents from those hearings supported the use and wanted to see a condition added to protect neighbors. And so that is why you'll see detached units being allowed via special permit through the Special Permit Granting Authority in Dalton, which is the Board of Appeals, and attached units being allowed as of right. And that is the text that you'll see in front of you tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any discussion, any questions? Al Nado.
Was that for questions?
No, let's open to discussion and/or questions.
Okay. Al Nado, 24 Elaine Avenue. I am a little bit familiar with Dalton zoning, and I am strongly opposed to this propaganda, this proposal, for a number of reasons. And one of them is right off the bat, is it used to take two-thirds of a majority, but for some reason, it's been down to a simple majority. But beyond that, I'm going to concentrate on just three areas. There's far more, but the three that I'm going to concentrate on tonight is, first of all, it's not affordable, not necessarily affordable housing, it's just additional housing, because we all know that the, the, the area is going to demand the cost, the price. The second one is ownership. The proposal says that it will be, all of the units on this property will be under single ownership. Doesn't say anything about it being a resident of the property. This can be owned, these properties can be owned by anywhere, anybody across the country or in other countries, because there's no way to guarantee that this will be under local ownership. That's my second point. The third point is that we should not be allowing this by right in any way, shape, or form. If you look at the chart that's on the page in the, in the local manual, the top line gives you all of your eight, your nine zones in town, residential, business, industrial, and then I, and PIDD, which I'm not fully aware of, but no matter, because industrial and PIDD is NP. It's not, nothing's permitted in this bylaw. The rest of them on the top line is if they are existing buildings or done within the existing building, they are permitted by right, which means go to a permitting officer, whether it's the building inspector or whoever it is, and he's the only man that's going to make the decision, man or woman, who's going to make the decision on whether you can do what you want. If you're putting up a new building, then it has to go through a zoning board of appeals, which has three members, has to vote on it unanimously in order to approve this, as you noticed, Tony. And you, one member can kill it, and that's what it should be. Every one of these things should be permit by special permit by the Board of Appeals, no other way. But there's no such thing as a new building that can be detached. I can simply put a brand-new building up and property. The only thing that's regulated by this proposal is the size of that additional unit. That's the only thing that's regulated. I can put up a new building, and I'll attach it to the back of the building, back of the existing building with a, I'll call it a breezeway, but in effect, it could be just a mudroom that enters into that new addition, and it's attached. I can sneak that in under the, under the building inspector instead of a zoning board of appeals. There's a lot of things wrong with this proposal, and I hope the people here tonight vote it down unanimously, and we'll, we'll discuss it another time after they get a better look at it, and the community is better informed and educated as to what this thing really means. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. In the back.
Daisy Dudek, 44 Stockbridge Avenue. I am only opposed to this article as to how it is written. It was my understanding that these dwelling units were to provide additional housing for elderly family members and/or family members or, you know, relations that are ill. And nowhere in the article does it state that there has to be handicap accessibility. I'm opposed to the size, 900 square feet up to. It's only 200 square feet less than the size of the house that I live in. And Part D, where it says provides homeowners with opportunity for supplemental income. If the whole gist of this article originally was supposed to be to provide housing for an elderly parent or, you know, handicapped child or et cetera, then where, why is there even a supplemental income aspect to it? Okay. We don't want a town filled with a whole bunch of Airbnbs in your backyard. Okay. So I think that the article should be sent back and rewritten so that it provides the best opportunity for our aging community to stay here and have a place to live.
Thank you. Up in the back.
I'm Lauren Gaherty, 67 Norwich Drive. Can you explain to us why this is majority instead of two-thirds required vote?
Yes, I can. It is due to the language that you'll see on the first paragraph of intent, and excuse me, you'll have to flip to it, on your warrant. The points in the first paragraph, an accessory dwelling unit within or attached to any single fam, any single or two-family dwelling or in a detached structure shall be authorized as of right, and the paragraph below it, a newly constructed detached accessory dwelling unit being authorized via special permit. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, which is the zoning chapter, lists the requirements at town meeting for zoning bylaws to be passed, and the language, granted, I don't have it in front of me, but it states, all zoning bylaw amendments, changes, or anything in relation thereto, requires a two-thirds majority vote, except for a few uses, two of them being accessory dwelling units, the first being attached, being permitted as of right, and the second being detached, being permitted via special permit. Both of those points allow for, excuse me, a simple majority vote at town meeting.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Tony Pagliarulo. I live at 617 Old Windsor Road. It was three years ago that I wrote to the board here in support of the ADUs. This isn't something new. California's been having it for many years, given their housing crisis, and we're in a housing crisis in Berkshire County also. This is a mother-in-law situation, more or less. As far as the ADUs being in separate ownership, it's not. It's listed here that it cannot be separate ownership, it has to be part of the main residence, so we're not looking at two owners on the same property. I was prompted to write this because of situations within my own family and friends where the elderly, in fact, wanted to live in a one-level situation. They wanted supplemental income to support themselves. They wanted a family member nearby to visit or to assist, or they wanted assistance with somebody to live in-house. We're aging. We're an aging population here in Dalton. I don't think we're going to have an explosion of ADUs, but for those people who are capable of adding on to look to the future and to have assistance as we age, I think it's a very good thing. I think it's very well-written, and as I said, it's not new. I think it's, it's in the interest of the town's people and the housing crisis that we're facing that this should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Way over here.
I just wish to correct him. I did not say separate ownership. I said it didn't necessarily mean residential ownership. Owner is a resident. And then the reason I said that is I had a member of my neighbor, my close member of my community down in our neighborhood, who just recently sold her home. The three highest bidders included two who were rental agencies. She's a single-family home. Those, two of those three were a rental agency, not in Dalton. She's, she chose to sell to the individual who was buying the home and is now living there. But that, this opens up the opportunity for companies outside of our area that comes in and buys a single-family home and goes through this process and has at least two rents coming off of it. That's what this allows, and that's what we have to protect against. And I suggest that this gentleman had my, if I said it wrong, I'm apologized, but I did not say double ownership. I said single fa, single ownership, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a resident of the property.
Thank you. Do we have someone way in the back? No, what? Yeah, okay. Go ahead, doctor. Then we have to go way up in the back in the second tier.
Henry Rose, 89 North Mountain Road. I agree with everything Tony Pagliarulo said over there. We're in a housing crisis. People don't have enough places to live, and a lot of people are at risk of being priced out of their own homes unless they can rent, so I support everything he just said over
Good evening. Kathy Schnapp, 31 Cell Street, Dalton. I just wanted to mention that I was present during some of the meetings before the planning board and discussion before this bylaw was even written, and without getting into too many details, I just want to say that the impression that it left on me was one with concern that it would change the dynamic of our town. There was a comment made that was particularly concerning to me about the town being a tourist area, and I never saw Dalton as a tourist area. I've lived here for 37 years, 38 years, and my concern was what the man, the resident previously discussed was that we should be concerned about outside companies coming in, and maybe these properties turn into rentals that have a weekly or a monthly turnaround. And I think that would drastically change the dynamic of our town, and I find that very concerning. That would create a whole new set of demographics for our area, and I'm not sure it's a good idea. I think maybe we do need to know more about it and think a little harder on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's just take Mr. Pagliarulo one, one more time. We'll get you in the back, and then you're up next.
Thank you. I just want to say I am sensitive to the remarks that were made in terms of ownership, and I understand that this is an issue in Great Barrington, if not other communities also. And perhaps a solution would be that these ADUs would have to be residents in the town of Dalton. Perhaps that would be an addition or a way to, to make sure that companies, realty agencies, outside people who are not residents would buy these properties with a different end in mind. I think the intent is well-intended. I think it's well-written, but perhaps it should be residents of Dalton.
Thank you. Tom Hutchison?
I just wanted to clarify, in case it was not made clear earlier, that the reason that the vote for this is a simple majority is that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has decided to make it easier for towns to plat, to pass zoning bylaws if they are meant to increase the stock of housing in the Commonwealth, especially affordable housing.
Thank you. Before you go, come down too far, way up in back, way, way up.
I'm Mary Bediant Wood from 77 Kimberly Drive, and I'm hearing a lot of fear and speculation about outsiders and tourism and so forth, but we do have an existing deficit here for our elderly. I live with my 100-year-old father. He is no longer to live on the second floor of our home. We are hoping to be able to build an ADU so that he can stay with us in our property, and this is now, and this is a necessary thing, and we really need to look at this, and maybe we need to write, rewrite some little aspects of it, I don't know, but this is what's going on. It's not just in California. It's happening in North Hampton. I've got disabled clients that are living in there, on the land with their family. They would not be able to be there if this were not possible for them. So I would ask you to please consider the existing need, not just the speculation and the fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Turner, 333 Washington Mountain Road. I did follow this a little bit. I know it was in the Eagle. There was a little write-up. I'm not 100% familiar with it, but what I'm hearing is, I feel like my term is this will junk up a nice town like Dalton. I don't picture, I mean, if I were to put an attachment on my house and have a ailing relative live there, it'd be great if I would just take them in my house. I don't think it's a great idea to just attach a little part of your house and call it an apartment or whatever we want to call this dwelling. And I also feel like this thing about the majority vote, I get it, that's, that's what the state allows us to do, which is great, we have some freedom, but this is a minority majority. This is a handful of our 6,000 residents that are going to yes or no this decision. I don't think it's a good idea. I'm hearing that people are, they want more information, and I think they need it before we make such a big decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Cheryl Rose, 89 North Mountain Road. So I'm wondering if it's possible for us to amend this bylaw here now, tonight, to make a motion that the owner of the residence must be living in it?
Yes, it's possible to make a motion.
I can make the motion, or somebody else who's very familiar with the bylaw can make it. I would just say simply that, that the resident, the owner of the residence must be residing, living in the building. Is, is that a legitimate thing? I'm open to.
You're getting there.
What? In the building, what did I say? Oh. Owner of the building.
Property.
Not the ADU, the main house. The owner of the property must be a resident in the building, in the primary residence, something, or not the primary, in the building.
All right. Al, what did you want to say? Did you want to say something about that?
Well, first of all, first of all, it should be either, because the elderly may want to move into the new building, the smaller building and the other. So it's got to be a resident on the property. But secondly, could we get a legal opinion from town council as to whether this thing is enforceable by law?
If what thing is enforceable? The ADU?
If such a limit as to you having to be a resident of the property is enforceable by law, or is it, can it be called unconstitutional?
All right, so we, we have a motion on the floor, but town council?
In my opinion, I mean, if, if it was phrased correctly, it's, it's enforceable. It may be difficult to enforce, to, to ensure that somebody is a, a resident of the town of Dalton who's living there, but in my opinion, it, it would be constitutional if, if worded correctly.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to amend Article 14 to indicate language that the owner of the property affected by the ADU needs to be a resident of the property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It needs to be seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Jean Gingras, Sunnyside Drive. I thought if there was an amendment, that it had to be in written form, not verbal.
I'm waiting for town council to tell us.
Mr. Moderator, I'm not aware of any town bylaw that, that requires motions to be in writing, but I, in, in this circumstance, it may be prudent to put it in writing so that everybody is clear as to what, what is being voted on.
Okay, fair enough. Do you have a pen and paper? Well, it's gonna, we don't, I don't think we have that ability. There's no stenographer up here. I want you to write, "I move that. We amend Article 14 by," and then use your language. I don't want to. I don't want to...
Tony, can I say something while they're working on that?
Sure, but tell me who you are. Tell us who you are.
My name is Zach McCain. I live at 20 East Street in Dalton, and I'm a member of the Planning Board. And I don't know, are there any other members? There's five of us, but I don't see any others here. So I get to say something. Almost everything that people have said tonight, we discuss those items in our meetings about this. We had a lot of meetings about this bylaw. The working group met for, I don't know, maybe six months or longer. We did a lot of different research about these. And I understand, believe me, the fears that have been expressed, especially about companies coming in and buying up housing and turning them into Airbnbs and other things. But that could happen anyway in this town. There's nothing preventing somebody from buying a house and turning it into a rental property. There's no bylaw against that. There's no bylaw against, if I was to move out of Dalton, I could not keep my house and rent it out. So I think that's a fear that's here, no matter what. As far as the ownership of the property, the amendment that's being proposed, we discussed that. And at one time, we had it where the ADU property that had an ADU on it had to have the owner as one of the residences. But it's very, it's not very practical to enforce. If somebody sells their house, or somebody has to move for a job, how are you gonna force them to sell their house? Because they can't live there anymore. Maybe they want to come back someday. It's just not a practical thing to try to do. And I agree, that would be nice to have, but it's not very practical. As far as cluttering up the neighborhood, if it's a detached ADU, it has to have all the same setbacks that you currently have on a lot. So a lot of lots, especially in the center of town, that are the small 60 by 100 or whatever lots, you're not gonna be able to build an ADU because you don't have the room for the setbacks. So it's not like every house in Dalton could even build one of these. I would say maybe a third, and mostly in the more rural areas of Dalton. The center of Dalton, you're just not gonna have the room. So I'm for this bylaw. I voted to present it as it's written, and I understand the fears. I thought we would have a lot more people here tonight. I was hoping to see a little bit more support for it because it is something we need. We had a master plan. The Planning Board is responsible for writing the Dalton master plan. We had assistance from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission in writing a master plan. I think it was in 2014, wasn't it, Grant?
2016 is the most recent update. Yep.
Okay. And one of the major things in there, and partly from the state, is Dalton needs more affordable housing. And this is an opportunity to get a few more affordable housing units. And it had, you know, the maximum is 900 square feet, but if you have a 1,200-square-foot house, it can't be more than half. Is that what it says, more than half?
Yeah, that's correct.
So you could only build a 600-square-foot ADU. So it's not like you could have a 1,200-square-foot house and build a 900-square-foot house next to it. That's not the way it works. 900 is the maximum. So if you had an 1,800-square-foot house, you could build, or larger, you could build a 900-square-foot ADU, detached ADU.
Thank you.
And we did look at the attached ADUs requiring a special permit, but the opinion was, they still have to meet all the requirements of the town of Dalton to build a attached ADU. So it's not like they can encroach on property lines or setbacks or any of that. And it still is limited to half the square footage of the house or 900 square feet. Anyway, I'm gonna support this bylaw. I hope some of these explanations will help. And if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or Grant can. He was at most of those meetings.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. We're trying to discuss that motion. Mr. Hutchison?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, which would require the agreement of both the original mover and the seconder. And that is, in Article 14, under definitions, at the end of the first sentence, which reads now, "Successory dwelling unit, ADU, means a residential living unit on the same parcel as a single-family or two-family dwelling," to add the words, "which is owned and occupied by a Dalton resident." It has to be agreed to by the original mover and the seconder.
I just want to respond to that wording to make sure that it's doing what the amendment did, which was, say, an elderly couple or an individual is living in this accessory dwelling. They may own the house, but they may go somewhere south for the winter. They're not living in it all the time. Their family lives in it, you know. Would that cover that? Because it didn't, I don't think it would, based on what you said. And it almost seems like they have to be there year-round.
A Dalton resident is a person who's going to be voting in the town of Dalton. They don't necessarily live here full-time.
Okay.
Many people winter in warmer climates, but they're considered residents because they vote here.
Okay, so is that effectively the same thing as primary residence? Because choosing where you vote, I don't think, I don't know how long you have to live there.
Again, the wording is "which is owned and occupied by a Dalton resident."
As a principal resident. That's not what you said.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Right.
That it's their primary residence, something like that. Not they just, yeah. Because it's, obviously, may not be occupied 12 months out of the year by the person. That's what I was getting at.
The motion on the floor is, I move, we amend Article 14 to include that the property must be the principal residence of the owner of the property. That's been moved, and that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
I don't want to prolong this, but this lady in front of me had a good point, is most of the people that are gonna be affected by this aren't here tonight. This did not get an awful lot of publicity during the planning stages and at the time the Planning Board was discussing it. But we're getting it tonight, and we'll get some press coverage, hopefully, after this. What's the problem with just delaying this for another year? We can bring it back next year. It's no problem delaying it, and we can straighten it all out in the process of that time period. Let's do the thing right, instead of trying to piecemeal together something that we're gonna buy tonight.
Okay, thank you. We're still talking about the motion to amend the article. We're not talking about the article right now. So anybody that wants to talk about the motion to amend, we need to deal with them in that order, in the back.
Hi, Susan Carroll, Sleepy Hollow Drive. If I heard correctly, Town Council and the Planning Board do not believe that this would be an enforceable change. And so if that, if I heard that correctly, I'm not sure why we would...
Do you mean the motion?
It wouldn't be enforceable to make sure that resident was a Dalton resident.
Yeah, to clarify, Mr. Moderator, my opinion was that, in principle, a motion to amend this bylaw to reflect the desire to have it be owned and occupied by a Dalton residence, resident, would be enforceable, unconstitutional. But again, this, the issue here is amending the bylaw so that it is, it's accomplishing what it is trying to actually do.
Okay, anybody else in the back?
Yes, Lauren Gehert, Norwich Drive. I agree with the intent of the bylaw and on the amendment. I agree with the principle of the amendment, but I would rather delay the vote until we can see it in writing, and it's been vetted, and we understand that it'll meet the intent of the amendment that we're talking about. So I personally would vote no on the amendment, because I'd like to see it in writing and think about it.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to amend Article 14 signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying no. I need a vote. We need to account, it needs to be a simple majority. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion to amend, raise your orange card. Hand up, okay. Okay, put your hands down. You've got a long way to go. Okay. All those opposed to the motion to amend Article 14, raise your cards. Don't go too far, ladies. Thank you. Okay, so that motion to amend passes 46 to 32. So now we're back to Article 14 as amended. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. Richard Hall, 164 Greenridge Drive. I'm actually in favor of this. Totally understand some of the concerns that have been raised. But we have had the opportunity through the Subcommittee to be listening in on the public meetings and the Planning Board meetings, so it's been carefully crafted. We have medical students locally. We have people that come in for Tanglewood that also need somewhere to stay. And also, we're all getting older. Well, not all of us, but some of us. And as that happens, it's going to be nice to have a place for the caretakers to be able to live or to have our elderly parents move in with us. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gingras?
I think this should be voted down. And I suggest that when you come back to the town, you come back with two different articles. One on the remodeling of an existing dwelling to include an elderly housing unit, which I, if I remember correctly, right now, that does require the residence of the dwelling and the person in the additional unit added to the existing dwelling have to be resident of family members. And then a second article that deals with the auxiliary dwelling unit and really spells that out in better detail.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Move to close discussion.
It's been moved to close discussion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying no. Article 14. We're gonna, I think we're just gonna do a count on this to go from square one. Ladies, if you don't mind. Article 14. All those in favor of Article 14 signify by raising your orange cards. All those in favor. As amended, thank you. Okay, thank you. You can put your hands down. You can put your hands down. All those opposed to Article 14 as amended, raise your cards. Article 15 deals with the town drive-through bylaw. Mr. Diver.
I move that the town adopt a bylaw allowing certain drive-through facilities as written in the town meeting warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Kovacs. I'm a member of the Dalton Historical Commission and I brought with me a written amendment for this article concerning the drive-throughs with the historic districts. As it's written, it would only include the already established Cranesville Historic District, but the members of the Dalton Historical Commission have asked that we amend this to include the second and third proposed historic districts, which we are in the middle of trying to get established. And the reason that we're trying to do this is not to limit anything in town, it's more to protect and preserve our historic buildings and places. And having things like commercial drive-throughs would really interfere with Dalton's center, we feel. And I can read the amendment, should I read it?
Please do.
Okay. We, the members of the Dalton Historical Commission, would like to amend the proposed drive-through bylaw, Article 15D, to say historic district requirements, drive-through facilities shall not be allowed in the town's present first designated historic district, the Cranesville Historic District, and the two proposed designated historic districts. The second, which is the Dalton Center flats, and the third, which is the East Main Street section of town that goes to Orchard Road.
Thank you. That's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion on the motion to amend Article 15? Thank you.
Hi, Mike Hopper, 111 First Street. That's all fine and good, those are just words, there's no maps here to show us where those are. So we either table the whole thing or come back with those districts shown. I mean, I don't know where any of those other ones are. I don't even know where the existing one is. I think I might live in it, but I don't know. But without, without a map or something, how do I know who I'm saying they can't have it there?
Point of clarification on the historic district?
Yes.
The present historic district, the Cranesville Historic District runs from the Pittsfield border east to Park Avenue with Main Street basically being the southern border. There's a few properties that extend onto South Street, and I mean a handful. And the northern boundary is Gulf Road, High Street.
Talking about the ones that we, that are proposed. We don't even know where those are.
I understand, I don't know of...
Right, and you don't know, and so how can we vote on something we don't know?
Mrs. Kovacs, do you have an answer for that?
I brought maps with me that I turned in before the meeting. And it kind of doesn't...
Did you bring them up for everybody? No?
No. I don't have those. As you know, our town hall office was caving in with asbestos, so we had to move all of our things to our church. So I had to spend a lot of time trying to find these. So the main reason isn't to limit, it's more to protect and preserve the integrity of our town. That's our main purpose for this.
Thank you.
Especially Main Street, the Main Street corridor.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Again, I was, Zach McCain, 20 East Street. I was on the planning board for producing this bylaw. And we did discuss including the two proposed areas, but the way it was written, it excludes drive-throughs in historic districts. So if those became a historic district in the future, no one could add a drive-through there. But currently, without them being designated historic districts, they could have a drive-through go through there. The other thing to keep in mind is drive-throughs are only allowed in business and I-1 and I-2, is that right, Grant?
Yes, only in the business and industrial zones and the PIDD.
Right. So there's not that much area that we're talking about that somebody could put in a drive-through? I don't know all those areas in my head, but it can't go in any residential districts. So if that's what people are concerned about. We have brought before the town drive-through bylaws in the past. The last time we did it, I don't remember what year it was, was it 13 or?
Twenty fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. So, and it got voted down very, very slim margin. And part of the reason is it was, I think a lot of people were concerned about their neighborhoods turning, you know, having a drive-through next door or something like that. And we had included the two proposed historic districts in that bylaw also. And this does require a two-thirds vote, correct?
Correct.
So I don't think it's likely to pass. I'd like to see it pass because there are some business properties that aren't in the historic districts that would be good locations for drive-throughs. You're talking about someplace like the new facility going in at Bergner's or some of the other places around town. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Lauren Geharty, Norwich Drive. I saw this amendment, and we already have drive-throughs for banks and smaller things. The concern about opening it up wide would be allowing fast food restaurants or chain restaurants that don't really meet the character of Main Street. And there are business sections on Main Street, because I looked at the zoning map, and you could have a Taco Bell or a McDonald's go on Main Street. So I would, if the historic districts, the amendment that is before us, would preclude fast food on Main Street, I would support the amendment. But I don't really know what those proposed historic districts are. So you have a really unique historic Main Street, and I wouldn't want to see fast food on Main Street.
Okay, thank you. So we're still talking about the amendment, ladies and gentlemen. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? So it's been moved and seconded and discussed. All those in favor of the amendment to Article 15 signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying no. Okay, that passes, needed to be a simple majority. Article 15, is there any further discussion on Article 15 as amended?
Yeah, just a personal comment. I'm not really opposed to this, but when I was on the Board of Appeals, I believe we granted a drive-up window for one of the businesses on Main Street. It never happened because they couldn't prevent from backing the traffic up onto Route 9, Main Street, which is a public, a state highway. State highway frowns upon that. And I'm going to test your memory, Mr. Chairman, because I think you were on the board when the project was put in where the old Shell station used to be. And that was going to be a convenience plus that had Dunkin' Donuts in it. And it was challenged by Cumberland Farms up the road in Boston Court, Land Court. And it never happened because it took forever for the Boston Land Court to put it, and I think you remember that.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dead old. Any further discussion? In the back.
Jim Caffrey, 60 Mountain View Terrace. At this point, we're supposed to be using less fossil fuels, so I just don't understand why we would want to have more traffic sitting, waiting for a drive-in.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, this needs to be a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article 15 as amended signify by saying aye. All those opposed by saying no. I'm gonna need a count. I think it's defeated, but... So all those in favor of Article 15 as amended, raise your cards. In favor. Thank you. Do the math for me. Needs to be a two-thirds majority, did not pass. Article 16, this deals with an amendment to the town bylaw regarding wetland protection, seeking to replace our current bylaw. Mr. Diver?
I move that the town adopt a bylaw for the purpose of wetlands protection as written in the town meeting warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bishop?
As a member of the Dalton Conservation Commission for over 33 years, I really suggest we do this. DEP has cut back tremendously in support they give us. Our education part of it, the MACC encourages us to do this. All the towns have followed through this. It gives us a lot more flexibility in what we can do. So I urge you all to support this and pass it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, folks. My name is Cheryl Rose and I am the chair of the Dalton Conservation Commission. So I just wanted to let you know that all the members of the commission support this unanimously, as Bob did a great job introducing, you know, it's something we really need. The state is relying on the local communities to protect the resources more as they, you know, defund some of the protections that we have at the DEP level. But I really encourage anybody who opposes it or has a question to please come forth before voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Henry Rose, 89 North Mountain Road. I'm also a member of the commission. I want to add that the Conservation Commission of our town voted unanimously in favor of this, and it was overwhelmingly supported by our select board. And the message is its association of conservation commissioners, which is our parent body that educates us. We go to courses with them, they encourage this. And finally, our town council went over it with a fine-tooth comb and approved of it.
Thank you. Mr. Jengris.
I'm just a little bit uncomfortable with why we, why, if the state law already has provided them with plenty of authority and from some of the things I've heard that's happened in the last few years, it certainly has, and I'm wondering why we would want to turn this, why we need a whole town duplication of the state bylaw? And would additional authority to perhaps modify those provisions? I think we can get by with the state law. We've done it for many years. I don't see any reason why we should have another board. If I read this correctly, there's all kinds of permitting you have to go through, there's all consultants to be consulted. It's just another layer of government, in my opinion, government bureaucracy weighed on us. I think we should leave things the way they are.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose.
I appreciate the opportunity to respond to that concern. I want you all to know that a good 90% or more of what you're reading in here is the existing bylaw. It needed to be, the existing, oh yeah, not bylaw, state law, the Wetlands Protection Act, and how the permitting, et cetera, is done for wetlands protection. The minimal changes that we put in, we actually took a lot from what Gray Barrington had already done and Amherst and just actually simplified a little bit and maybe a little less stringent on some. You could look under the purpose and see what the purpose of the Wetlands Protection Act is, and that is to protect public and private water supply, groundwater, flood control, erosion control, et cetera, storm damage. You know, our wetlands serve a tremendous purpose. The additions that we made and the modifications... The additions that we made and the modifications were really minimal. We are just extending the jurisdiction a little bit to cover such things as the water in the stream, instead of just the land under the water, things like that. An isolated wetland in addition to a bordering vegetated wetland. There are a few things that, you know, this law has been around for quite some time, 1972 laws, and then we got the Rivers Protection Act in the 1990s. And this is just an additional protection for the resource because of the importance that we are all recognizing with the changes in our climate and the pressures for development, that we want to have the ability to protect the resource. Anybody who has worked with the commission knows, and we actually spoke to our industrial, economic and industrial commission, what is it, that John Boyle chairs. We went and spoke to them about it. They were fully in support of this. So the other addition that there is, is an enforcement piece, which is like a parking ticket, ticketing scenario, because right now, if someone chooses not to comply, then our only, after an enforcement order, our only recourse is to take them to court, which is quite expensive for the town. So we would hope to never use such a weapon as, you know, such an opportunity as a ticketing situation, but it kind of gives us a little bit more clout in saying that, you know, one does need to comply. And I just wanted to say that we, you know, visit many properties to discuss with residents how to accomplish their projects and protect the resource, and that's really the role that we provide. So we are here to protect the resource. We're not here to stop people from doing projects. We're here to work with them, to, if necessary, modify their project to protect the resource for all of us. Some of you folks may know about some flooding areas in town, businesses that get flooded. These are the kinds of things that, you know, if we had years ago more strict, you know, regulations, such things might not happen. But we have to look to the future and try to be prepared. I guess that's it. Does that sort of answer your question, just as far as the regulation itself? Everything you're reading here is not new. A very little bit of it is new. Most of it, all the permits are actually the identical permits. We are, that's what it's written in about, a notice of intent. They already have to do a notice of intent. So we're, you know, all the different pieces. That's the way the process is. We work under the Department of Environmental Protection. We still will use there. Actually, the application that an applicant must fill out to come with us if they're doing a significant project in a resource area, the notice of intent from the Department of Environmental Protection currently already has a space in it. Do you have a municipal bylaw that perhaps is applicable? So it's very, you know, something that they expect to be a part of it. It's not, it's not a tremendous amount of additional regulation.
Thank you. Dr. Rose?
To further answer the gentleman's pertinent questions, I'd like to give two specific examples. One is there's a business, M&amp;W, on Hubbard Avenue, and their business gets a tremendous amount of water with flooding in the spring, such that they've had to move expensive equipment up on blocks. And had the bylaw been in place earlier, had we had more stringent protections, this business would not have had to suffer this. On another case, we went to a property on Kirchner Road where a person, a homeowner, had about half of his backyard flooded with water that came in from a property upstream from him. Again, had we had more stringent regulations then, such as the kind we have in this bylaw, he wouldn't have had half of his backyard flooded. As it turns out, in the latter case, we were able to have the property owner upstream make changes, and that improved the situation. But in the case of M&amp;W, there was nothing that we were able to do. So it is not our intention to have more unnecessary government regulation, and we're all sensitive to that. Our purpose is to protect property, homeowners, and flooding is huge, as well as there are other interests of the act, as Cheryl already mentioned. Thank you for raising that question, and we'd like to hear any more concerns.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Filio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a question on the enforcement. It says that the, a person in violation could receive a fine of up to $300 for each offense. Is there any scale that would allow for warning, $100, $200, anything like that, that's set up on that, as they are in our other bylaws under Article 21 of the state?
Thank you.
We did originally have something like that in there, so I think this is what was recommended to us, to put it that way. Dan, it also says "may," and it says "up to." So there's a lot of latitude on the part of the Conservation Commission, of course. We, you know, deal with things commensurate with the problem that we're dealing with.
Mr. Moderator, may I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
Well, my question relates to Cheryl is that it's, I see it says "may"
Yep.
And "up to."
Yep.
But it doesn't say what "up to" means. So one person could go in and may get a warning or not get a ticket. Another person may go directly to a $300 ticket. I just believe that there should be a scale that they could work on to determine, $100 for the first offense, $200, so that they could work up to, I think it would just show balance by the committee to, in enforcement, it would give an opportunity. And if I may, the article as written falls within the guidelines of what we looked at, the Open Space Committee, for the areas that we have in town. And I support the article. I just feel this is an area that could cause difficulties for the committee once it came forward.
Okay, so I'm going to respond to, you're concerned about $300, right? That's what I'm responding to?
That's it, yes.
Okay. It says, "may be punished by a fine of not more than $300 for each offense." And you're concerned that we're going to unevenly apply this, or each day, like, first give a warning, but is that what your concern is? We're going to jump to $300?
Mrs. Rose, I don't want you having a conversation with him.
Okay.
I want you addressing all of us, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. This is how we were advised to write it. That's what I can tell you. It says, "may be punished by a fine of not more than $300 for each offense." As I've already said, you know, your Conservation Commission, which is what we are, is a bunch of volunteers. So we're not, of course, we work with everybody, and we try to work through whatever somebody does. This is going to be invoked when we're having somebody who's non-compliant after being warned. This is, it's opening the door for our discretion, absolutely. But I guess I hope you would trust us to not be overly uneven-handed with the whole thing?
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Chief? Next, not yet. Chief, did you have something else?
It's not a question of not trusting the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. It's not a question of not trusting the Conservation Commission to do this and to do it fairly. It's just a question of, what I saw in my experience was, they always come up with the question, if you end up going into court with something, saying, "Why was it $300? Why don't you have a method of showing that there's a program where you can find people different levels?" And I agree with what Cheryl says. It's just that I think it would be better for the town to have that up front and that sort of a guideline set forward. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a, let's hear from him. Mr. Paglirollo?
Jean Gingras, Sunnyside. Why don't we add an amendment to the motion on the floor and put in place what Mr. Filio has made a comment to? Then it would be in writing so that an individual would not feel offended if they were given a higher penalty. So I would like to see somebody write a motion, or an amendment, excuse me, to the motion, and put some monies in place.
Is that what you're trying to do?
Well, I think that's what I'm trying to say.
Are you making the motion?
I would like somebody to write a motion, not myself, because I don't know what monies would be in place. Mr. Filio's had the experience with the police department, and he might have an opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Up in the back?
Joseph Albano, 609 South Street in Dalton. I would encourage my fellow residents to vote no against this article. It is giving additional power and oversight to a committee, not people that we have elected to represent us. And yes, I do believe, as time goes on, that perhaps people with personal grudges against their neighbors would use this type of power to influence the types of projects that would need to be delayed or adapt in such a way that basically prices them out of completing their projects. And once again, I think it's another layer of government oversight upon what we already have. The laws are in place already. Numerous agencies enforce those laws. So I encourage my fellow residents to vote no.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Rose, last time.
I just, I'd like to respond that the Department of Environmental Protection, our state, would like us to have this authority because they don't have the manpower any longer to enforce the laws to the extent they used to. And I'm sorry that you feel that we would abuse the power, but that's not how we operate, and our history speaks well to that. Bob, do you want to say anything about how often, or, you know, projects happen 99.99% of the time. It's very rare a project is denied. I haven't seen one in 15 years, so...
Thank you.
May I speak, Tony?
Mr. Bishop?
In all my years on it, I make, we might have had maybe five incidents where we had to talk to people about it. We always warn them. We work with the people. Nobody can abuse the power of the commission because it's a vote of the whole commission, not just one person.
No, not yet. Not yet, Cheryl, please. Anybody else who wishes to discuss this motion, I mean, this article? Okay, Mrs. Rose, last chance. Thank you.
I was just going to say, just for your information, there is an appeal process for any of our decisions. So if somewhat, and the meetings are public, and there are laws that neighbors have to be notified. So there are lots of, you know, protections in place to make sure we don't overstep.
Okay. Okay. We have one more over here.
Yeah, my understanding of the current Massachusetts-
Please identify yourself for the record.
Art Sanders, South Street.
Thank you.
My understanding is that the current Massachusetts state law has an infrastructure where there's a lot of process checks and landowner rights. So does this usurp all of those, those current laws and current processes, so everything now has to come through this one Conservation Commission in town? And will that open up the town for a potential increase in litigation costs, since now it seems like this is going to usurp those state laws that exist today?
Mr. Bishop, do you have a response to that?
I didn't hear the whole thing. I'm sorry.
Does this usurp state law and substitute for state law, maybe leading to increased litigation for the town?
No. No, because there's an appeal process to it.
Appeal process to who? The appeal process to the commission?
Yeah, you can appeal to the state also.
To DEP? To the DEP?
The DP, yes.
So that, those processes remain intact?
Yes, absolutely.
Article 16 has been beaten to death. All those, this only requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no.
No.
That passes by majority. Article 17 deals with a Barden Farm property up on North Street. Mr. Hutchison?
Well, you can, Phil, I'm sorry.
You make the motion.
Thank you. I move that the town transfer the former Barden Farm property, being assessors lots 213-4-0, 215-12-0, and 215-26-0, from the tax title custodian to the select board for general municipal purposes, and also for the purpose of conveyance or lease of up to 20 years, subject to an agricultural preservation restriction to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as applicable, on such terms and conditions as the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town, and authorize the select board to execute such documents as may be necessary or convenient to carry out the intent of this article.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hutchison?
Thank you. The town took this land several years ago for back taxes. It's under the state's agricultural preservation restriction program, which means it has to be used for agriculturally-related purposes. A few years ago, the select board considered simply selling the property, and at that time there were some issues with selling the property. The option of leasing the property, or a portion of the property, was not considered at that time. Now, it is an option, which would allow the town to receive some small amount of revenue from leasing agricultural land and retaining some forested land for passive recreation. This is land that abuts the North Mountain Park. And this article would do the same thing the town meeting voted for, for the North Mountain Park parcel, which is to transfer control from the tax title custodian, who's the town treasurer, to the select board. And the, there's a related article, Article 22, which is proposing a forest management, a forest stewardship plan for the parcel that would not be leased. They're roughly equal in size. But there's a portion that goes back beyond North Mountain Park that would be retained by the town for passive recreation, trails and such, and managed. I hope the Open Space Committee would have a good deal of input into how it was managed. I'm certainly not interested in turning it into a major logging operation. I think it would be great to have a nice hardwood forest under town management for town purposes. So this article just transfers control of the parcels to the select board from the tax title custodian, the same way the North Mountain Park parcel was transferred from the tax title custodian to the select board. I'm hoping that the vote on Article 22, the forest stewardship plan, will serve as an indication as to whether the town wishes to sell all of the land or lease part of the land. If you, if you think the land, just all ought to be sold and take a one-time, one-time revenue, then, then vote against the forest stewardship plan. If you think that that land ought to be managed by the town and the other part of it leased for agricultural purposes, those, vote yes for the forest stewardship plan, because that would be required through, by the state's APR program in order to make sure it was being managed properly.
Thank you.
Yes, Peter Barden, 30 Wilcona Falls Road.
Yes, Peter Barden, 30 Wakona Falls Road. And you've left out one very important thing here, that the, this property is in violation of the APR. The town put it in violation by taking it. And any, by leasing it, that's not going to resolve the violation. Violation can only be resolved by selling the property, and a few other things, but everyone here should understand that this land is in violation. The state is the one who put it in violation, or holds the violation. It can be resolved, but by leasing it is not going to do it. Putting the forest into stewardship is not going to do it. I urge everyone to vote no on both of them, and we've talked about, we just had a long conversation here about preservation and so forth, resource preservation. Let this do what it's supposed to do. That's what the APR is supposed to do, is preserve the agricultural land. It is agricultural land. There is other ways of doing this. The town has, or had, property at Duncan Brook. I don't know how many people here remember Duncan Brook. It was a fiasco. The town bought the property from my family, and turned it into a recreation area. Within a few years, nobody was going. Even to this point, it's not on the tax rolls. So let's not think, kid ourselves that by, that this, all this property, the woodland and so forth, is going to be a big recreational area. I doubt it. I very much doubt it. People are up there riding ATVs through it now. The town is not doing a very good job. They put up some, some signs up there. I've, I work right next to it. I watch ATVs riding all over the place. People are violating the, there are no trespassing, there's no, there's, there's nobody looking after this. If the town is going to be a landlord, that opens up all kinds of possibilities. The town is going to, may have to evict someone. We all know what it takes to evict someone. So I just would urge everyone here to do what the APR was designed to do, and protect it, and let's not get involved with the town being a landlord, and entering into something that's 20 years down the road. Who knows who's going to be in the select board? Who's going to be in charge then? Who's going to want to look after it? It's going to have to be people hired, there's going to have to be money spent in order to look after all this town, all this property. And I would, in closing, again, I would urge everyone to vote no, and keep this, we, the town should sell it, and be done with it.
Thank you.
I would ask that the moderator allow another taxpayer who is present here tonight, who is not a voter, to speak on this matter. He's a little well-versed in it than I am, he isn't a butler, and one of the bigger butlers. And James Dick and Crane is here. If he wants to speak, I would request that you allow him to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson first wants to respond.
Just like to note that the plan that I've presented has received the approval of the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, and its agricultural preservation restriction program. Not according to the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Barden, did you want to try to recognize Mr. Crane?
Yes, you recognize Mr. Crane.
Okay, there's, there's, I suppose that's a motion to recognize a non-voter to speak?
Aye.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those that want to have Mr. Crane speak, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Mr. Crane.
Our farm, Holiday Farm, is also an APR farm. And the, just to, to, I have a little comment as to what Mr. Hutchinson said about the fact that the Department of Ag Resources approves this. We had a barn burned down, we wanted to replace it. We, being the APR farm, we had to get approval from the Department of Ag Resources, DAR. And we had a violation. We had a horse-riding arena, not arena, just a fenced-in area. When we did it, I didn't realize that was not considered an agricultural use, but when we went to get a COA, a certificate of approval for rebuilding our barn, they said we had to resolve our violation before they would give us a certificate of approval. I'm quite sure that the Department of Ag Resources is not going to give any COA certificate of approvals, or any other approvals, on that property, as long as that violation exists. And so I, I don't think that it's correct to say that they approve of not resolving the violation. And the other part of an APR is that when abutting farms are considered to be more viable as a larger farm than as a more fragmented farm. So the, the goal of the APR is to see farmland aggregated, as opposed to being fragmented. So when one APR farm is going to be sold, the goal is to have the abutting APR farm acquire it to aggregate farmland, making it more viable. And this is, you know, a goal of the program. And so when two APR farms abut each other, and in this case, the, certainly the town of Dalton could lease the land, but it's still going to be leasing land with a violation on it. And it will be limited, whether it's the leasing or the town itself, as to what they can do without resolving the violation. So I, I think that it's not going to be in the town's interest to be, be a landlord, as Peter Barden was saying, and trying to manage the lease of agricultural land that has a violation on it, is limited by the fact that it won't, there won't be the ability to get certificates of approval if somebody wanted to build a shed, or any number of other activities that require approvals, that without resolving the violation, they won't be able to do that. So I, I don't see it as being a viable solution, because it doesn't resolve the violation.
Thank you. Yes, in the back.
Maureen Mitchell, 1099 North Street. I live on the corner of Duncan Brook, also known as Shally Road, and in the spring runoff, the stream that goes through parcel 215-12, goes through the EverSource property, comes down through the hayfields between my barn and my gazebo garden. Now, if you develop this, you are going to have a wetlands project that is going to be a big deal. I'm also aware of the traffic of the ATVs that come over the EverSource route at 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and I think if you add more trails, that'll be a bigger problem. So I'd be very careful with what you're planning to do with the lower pieces of this forest management proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else? Over here.
Peter Crochet, 240 Olds Road. And I believe what Mr. Crane and Mr. Barden is saying is the law on farming. I've been in farming for a long time, and I believe this is all true, what they're saying, every one of them. So just to let you know when you vote.
Thank you.
Richard Hall. I'm just reading the explanation underneath, and it says, the last part of the paragraph says, "A sale would provide immediate income to the town." So I'm a little confused, because it doesn't say anything about a sale in the actual article. The explanation does suggest that it could be sold by the town. And I don't know whether there's a way of adding lease or sale to the actual article, and then that would leave it up to the select board and the experts to figure it out. Thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson, you want to respond?
Yes, the, the article is always written more broadly than the, the motion, but the article does say for the purpose of conveyance, which means sale or lease. So I'm, I'm not sure. Was that your, your question? The article does say conveyance or lease, as does the motion.
So that does mean that if we vote yes, then the select board could sell it or lease it? Thank you.
Correct, but it's still subject to the APR.
Oh, absolutely.
In the back?
I was just wondering if anybody on the select board, or Mr. Hutchinson, can explain what the, the violation is? Or maybe Mr. Barton, or Mr. Crane?
Do you know what it is now? Mr. Hutchinson?
The, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the violation you're referring to is the split ownership. There is also a parcel of the APR land, which was originally granted by the state, which is in Windsor. And the state no longer grants the APR designation to parcels of land or farms that cross town boundaries, perhaps because they've learned from this example that it's, it's difficult. The land in Dalton was taken for non-payment of taxes. The land in Windsor has, the, the taxes have been kept up. It's a, it's a much smaller piece in Windsor. So the, the APR land is now under two different owners, and so there's, there's a bit of a contradiction in state law there. And the town is required to auction the land. If, if you don't pass this, we are required to auction the land, and the state has prevented us from auctioning the land, because some of the land is in, under the APR, is in Windsor. And that's what the hang-up has been. It's actually been the state that's been preventing the town from doing anything with its property. As one way to start getting some of that land back into active agricultural production, I proposed that the town lease a portion of the land that the town does have, in order to get it back into agricultural production. At the same time, I saw a benefit to possible recreation land. So that was the genesis of the, the current plan, which, again, as I said, did receive support from the director of the program, the APR program at the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry. Mr. Crane? Right behind you.
The APR program has not prevented this property from being sold. That, that's just not true. The violation is the result of subdividing an APR, breaking it from being one ownership to multiple ownerships. And that is a violation. It is not a contradiction, it's a violation. It's how all APRs are. So I think Mr. Hutchinson is incorrect, that the APR program has not prevented the town from selling the land. The APR program says that the violation needs to be corrected, but they're not saying you can't sell the land, it just means that the violation goes with the land. So a purchaser of the APR is going to buy it with the violation still on it, but the, the APR program has not prevented the town from selling the land. The initial proposed sale, some five or six years ago, was prevented because it was a further subdivision planned, meaning they were going to sell the portion that was south of Route 9 separately from the portion that's north of Route 9. That would have been an additional violation, and the sale was prevented because of that, but not because if, if it was sold all as, the, without that additional subdivision, they would not have prevented it. And so that, that's, it could be sold, as long as it's not further subdivided.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, the, the contradiction is in state law. The town legally took land which was in non-payment of taxes. The town is legally required to sell that land at auction. That is problematic, for the purposes Mr. Crane has, has said, but, you know, that, that is, those are the conditions under which the town can sell the land, only at auction, and that does not guarantee who, who gets that land, but we haven't been able to do that. So in the meantime, one way to get the land back into agricultural production, or at least part of it, is to lease it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I have just a question, Mrs. Turner, Washington, Mount Road. How many acres are we talking about? Visualize where it is. How many acres is included in this? And why do you want to do the forestry plan? What, what is your selectmen's interest in a forestry plan? What's that going to do for the town, and will that cost the town?
Forestry plan is under a separate article. We'll have to deal with that when we get to it. Right now, we have to limit ourselves to number 18.
And I'm happy to, to-
Are you done? I, I don't want to cut you off.
I did have another question, and now I forgot it.
My bad.
Yes, my other question was, you say possibly lease it. Do you have, lease it for what? I'd be sick to hear, okay, we're going to lease it for marijuana cultivation. That's agriculture, I'm thinking. So I'm curious, what, you want to lease it for what, and what will the forestry plan do, and who pays the forester? Is that, is that a town, something the town has to pay, I guess, is my question. I just would like a little more info on it, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, for, for your first question, the total number of acres is about 140, 145, about half of that, maybe a little- About half of that, maybe a little, slightly less than half of that, would be leased for agricultural purposes. It has to be used for agriculture, because it's in APR. The forestry plan would be required to show that the town was actively managing the property in, forestry is an agricultural purpose. And so, a forestry plan was acceptable when this plan was presented to the Mass Department of Ag Resources as a way of showing that the town was actively managing that land in a way that is generally recognized as appropriate. As for what gets cultivated, that would depend on what farmer won the lease. Again, the town has to bid that out. They can't just, you know, pick somebody, you know, and say, "Yeah, yeah, we're going to give you a deal." We have to, we have to go through a bidding process for that. And I don't know who would win that. I do know that in order for there to be marijuana cultivation, there's another process that has to be gone through, which is much more involved. So, I very much doubt that that would be the result. So, that's, I don't know who would win that lease, or what kind of agriculture they would do there. But because there are all these other strings attached to marijuana cultivation, we haven't had anyone yet approached the town for that.
If I may, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Diver?
Just to read into the record and share with the, share with the town public here, this is communication from one of our attorneys from KP Law with a response from attorney Christine Smith of Mdar in response to what are the parameters of which we can do. The first is that the Barton Farm in Dalton may only be sold at the buyer's also purchase of the Windsor property. The second option, that it's acceptable to lease the Barton Farm in Dalton without the Windsor property, so long to the leasing uses a property for purposes consistent with the APR. So, that's the legal parameters that we would work within. And that is directly from our attorneys at KP Law, and again, Christine Smith, the attorney from Mdar. I hope that helps.
Thank you. In the back?
Dan Filial, Shivers Drive. Correct me, but I believe that the purpose of this article is simply to transfer the control of this property from the tax collector to the Select Board. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Am I missing anybody? No. Okay. Yes. Okay. Sorry. Right behind you. Al?
Al Nato again. I have, I always tend to be suspicious. Are either one of the two gentlemen who have been talking against this, by any chance, owners of the Windsor property? Because that, that would explain why they are so much against our doing what we're being asked to do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. You don't see anything. No. Ms. Rose? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
Cheryl Rose. I admit to being sufficiently confused, but something that came up that I do have a question about, which is, if we lease this property, are we talking about, is there an expense to the town to be a landlord or a property manager? Like, what's involved in that for the town?
Mr. Hutchinson, you have that answer?
I came from a smaller town that did lease some town land for agricultural purposes. And it was not a complicated process. And there was no expense to the town involved in that. Reviewing the lease, a legal review of the lease, perhaps, would be that. And in response to a previous question, yes, the forest stewardship plan would cost money. And Article 22, the motion for that is going to ask for $20,000. It may not cost that much, but that's what it would cost. And it should be, should be good for 20 years.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Hearing none and seeing none. This is Article 17. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. That passes by two-thirds. Thank you, ladies. Article 18. Article 18 deals with removing the positions in the Dalton Police Department from the Civil Service statute. Mr. Divers?
I move that the town authorize the Select Board to petition a general court for special legislation, providing that all positions in the police department, after passage of the act, not be subject to the Civil Service statute. All is set forth as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Article 18 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Chief Stroh? No? You were waving your hand.
Actually, Chief, my question is for you. What, I know there are 31 communities within Massachusetts who are not part of the Civil Service exam test. Well, the last I looked at is 2021, and more are going towards that. So, what is this going to be replaced with? Because, you know, back, way back when the Civil Service exam was initiated, it was to prevent nepotism and any type of politics in government. Okay? So, what, are you going to have a company initiate the exam for the town? Are there going to be any increased educational requirements for recruits? And also, are you going to still sort of do a, you know, take three candidates? Eliminate two, keep one, like Civil Service has? And are there going to be any psychological requirements for the police department?
Chief Stroh?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak before I turn into a pumpkin tonight. I appreciate that. So, that was a lot of questions, so I'll try to answer all of them. So, with me tonight, I have Officer Josh Bradley, who is the Vice President of our union, and Officer Tyler Miller, who's a union member. So, to be upfront and clear, the union supports this, or we wouldn't be doing it. So, Dalton Police Department joined Civil Service in 1967. And like you said, it was to help eliminate hiring practices that probably weren't the best practices. And now, we have comprehensive police policies, and we have collective bargaining with the union, and we have policies in place to hire more efficiently. And psychological exams are part of our hiring process, and have been for years. So, everyone has to go through that. This will give us greater flexibility in our hiring, local candidates. And just to give an example, we just hired an officer in February, and it took Civil Service 40 days to get us a correct list after three errors. It took repeated tries to get the correct list from them. And 16 of our 22 applicants lived east of Boston, because the local candidates here scored maybe a point less than the people from Boston, and that gives us no flexibility. We have to take those candidates. And what happens is, they come here, they take our job, they go to the police academy, and then they leave, and they go back home to where they came from at a cost to the taxpayers of about $45,000. So, when I say we really need to leave Civil Service, the union supports it. We need to do this for the sake of our town, for the sake of tax dollars. It's just very expensive. All other Berkshire County police departments have left over the last few years. Great Barrington is leaving in June. And Pittsfield is the lone Civil Service Department at this point, and I don't really know what they want to do with that. And there was just a survey put out by the Mass Chief of Police that 60% of Civil Service Departments are either actively leaving or exploring leaving Civil Service, because it is extremely outdated, and the policies just aren't what we have. And to answer your question, there are companies free of charge to us that will come in and administer exam that the recruits will pay for. So, the candidates pay for it, so it's no cost to the town. So, that gives us the flexibility. We can go with education, veteran status, and we're going to work together. And I'd be happy to take a citizen panel to see, you know, maybe some input on what you all thought would be a good quality in a police officer. That's fine. Plus, the union, because we just want the best candidates we can get. And unfortunately, there are few and far between people that want to be police officers now. So, and the other point with that is, any potential regionalization is out if we don't leave Civil Service, because we are the only Civil Service Department, and we can't take employees that aren't Civil Service. So, I hope that answers all of your questions, quickly and efficiently.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 18, this just requires a simple majority, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Yes.
I think. Passes. Article 19. I'm sorry, no. We have to jump to Article 28. 28 is a private petition regarding the status of River Street Extension. Who's going to make that presentation? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Hi, Carrie Geibel, 49 River Street Extension. And I move to move forward Article 28 as written.
Article 28 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Nato?
Do we have any details on the street itself? We've had streets come before this, meetings in the past, and some of the problems that have cropped up on streets, there's one in particular, but I'm not going to name it, where the black top of the street is the only width that exists on that street. So, the town officials, at the Highway Department, turned it down from their aspect, because in plowing that street, they'd be pushing the snow on private property, which makes them liable. There's also no cul-de-sac at the end of the street, so the trucks have no way of turning around without going on private property, and they have to back out the entire length of the street to make the next pass. Do we have that kind of problem on this street? Does this street have extra land for the purposes of what I just mentioned, without creating damage to private property and therefore liabilities? Thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson, do you know the answer to that?
To the best of my knowledge, the town has not received a proposed layout.
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie, from 49 River Street Extension. So, I can answer a few of your questions. My house is actually the end house on that road, and there is a large turnaround area at the end. But just to give you guys a very quick background, River Street Extension is an old street. The homes have been there for 150 years. And somehow, as the town developed, the road just never got accepted. It has always been cared for by the town, to the point that none of the homeowners on the road even knew we lived on a private road, until we all got letters in the fall saying that we weren't going to be plowed anymore. This may sound familiar. There was a Berkshire article, Berkshire Eagle article about it back in December. So, you know, that obviously was putting a big burden on us as homeowners, because up until this point, you know, the plowing has been done by the town. It is a gravel road, and the town dumps, you know, gravel once every handful of years to make sure that it's accessible. There've never been any issues up there to us as homeowners. You know, this shouldn't add a big burden to the town, because the town's been doing it historically all along. The road is only a couple hundred feet long, so, you know, it doesn't take a huge chunk out of the town's resources, but it does take a big chunk out of the homeowner's resources, which is why we're bringing it here for some discussion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a point of clarification on this article. Chapter 82, Section 21 to 24 sets forth requirements for how a public way is accepted. My understanding, according to town manager, is that those procedures have not been satisfied up to the date.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
If I may clarify one more time, we did go before the Planning Board a few months ago. We were told that was the next step. And I believe that's where these proposals would be put forth. We were told by the Planning Board that because we were on the docket here, that this was the avenue to take instead. So, we did initiate that process, and then it was halted, because that's just what we were instructed to do.
Thank you. Mrs. Jengus in the back?
Thank you. We checked in the Superintendent of Streets, and I don't know if he's still here, but I know there are requirements before a street can actually be accepted. And if he's here, I'd like to ask, have him, okay, maybe respond to this, to see if the street actually meets all the requirements. I understand the plea, your plea, and I certainly would like to see it be accepted, if it's acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, somebody raise their hand? I know, but he didn't raise his hand. I don't know who he is. Thank you. Thank you.
The street is, we used to take care of it forever. We didn't this past year. It came up in the fall, right? I was gone for a few years, came back, whatever. So, we haven't. I called Mass DOT today, just to get a guide of what they say would make it, take it from an accepted road. And he told me the way the state's using it these days, which is the Mass DOT, state engineer I could talk to today, our largest fire apparatus needs to be able to drive up that road, take the turn, whatever it needs to do to get up that road. And if our largest fire truck can get there, then the road can be accepted. So, that's kind of where it's at at the moment, which I think the fire chief probably would be able to tell us that answer.
Fire chief?
Here, Ma.
Kick it down the road.
So, it was my, Zach McCain, 20 East Street. It was my understanding that to get to that street, you have to go down private property, which is the Riverview Apartments. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I don't know how that impacts things. If you have to go across private property, do we have some kind of arrangement with Riverview Apartments, or?
All right, gentlemen, don't have a discussion. Talk to all of us. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a very quick answer to your question. I researched all of these deeds when this came up back in the fall, and there are easements in place guaranteeing access to the homes. It is in the homeowner's deeds, as well as in the deeds that are owned by River Run. So, that is protected.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. This only requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 28 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Passes. Believe it or not, Article 1.
May I make a motion just to move the Central Berkshire article?
You can make that motion.
May I make a motion to move Articles, if I have this correctly, correct? Article 5, which is a Central Berkshire Regional School District budget. And I believe it's also-
Article 6.
Article 6 and Article 7.
It's been moved and seconded to move Article 5, 6, and 7 to the next round. Is there a sec, there was a second? Okay, there's a second. All those in favor of moving these articles signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Article 5, Finance Committee. Mr. Drosching. This deals with our share of the operating budget for Central Berkshire Regional School District.
I move the town raise and appropriate $8,521,913 for the purpose of paying the town's share of the operating budget of the Central Berkshire Regional School District for fiscal year, beginning July 1st, 1st, 2022. for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022.
I second that.
Article 5 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This only requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Passes. Thank you. Article 6 deals with the transportation budget of the Central Berkshire Regional School District. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town raise and appropriate $363,721 for the purpose of paying the town's share of the transportation budget for Central Berkshire Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022.
I second that.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Requires a simple majority. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Article 7 deals with the town's share of the capital budget for the Central Berkshire Regional School District. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town raise and appropriate $1,298,313 for the purpose of paying the town's share of the capital budget of the Central Berkshire Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022.
I second that.
Article 7 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. That passes. Once again, Article 1. Article 1 dealing with the compensation with various departments in the town's annual budget. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2023, beginning on July 1st, 2022, for the revolving funds established in the town bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers, with which such expenditure limits to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes prior to July 1st for the ensuing fiscal year to revise the same as follows. Plumbing inspector, $15,000. Electrical inspector, $10,000. Tree warden and planning board, $5,000. Cemetery Department, $2,500. Council on Aging Transportation, $20,000. Council on Aging Programs, $15,000. Cemetery Department, $5,000. Legal advertising, $3,000. Parks maintenance, $2,000. Highway Department, boom mower, $9,000.
I second that.
Article 1 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Requires a simple majority. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Article 2 deals with the schedule of compensation for certain elected officials. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town adopt the schedule of compensation for elected officials for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022 as follows. Moderator, $430. Town clerk, $59,511. Select Board Chair, $5,028. Other select board members, $5,000 or $4,000.
I second that.
Article 2 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Simple majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. That passes. Article 3. Article 3 is dealing with the town budget. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the amounts of money set forth in the printed report of the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2023 amended to include an additional $10,000 for engineering, $7,000 for highway, $6,750 for assessors, and totaling $8,342, or, yeah, $8,342,528 be appropriated for the several purposes therein itemized, each number item being considered as a separate appropriation, and that the same be expended only for such purposes.
I second that.
Article 3 has been moved and seconded. There was a handout that was provided to everybody. There is a budget in there, a breakdown of it, beginning on page number 18. Are there any questions regarding the General Government section? Any questions regarding public safety? Any questions regarding education? Any questions regarding the public works? Any questions regarding human services? Any questions regarding cultural and recreation? Any questions regarding debt service? Any questions regarding the other category? Is there any discussion regarding Article 3? Hearing none, seeing none. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. That passes. Article 4. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town raise and appropriate $60,125 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022 for the purpose of providing recreation, leisure time activities to the people of Dalton, including all incidental and related expenses to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Just requires a simple majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. That passes. Article 8 deals with a transfer of, is that right? Yeah. Right? Okay. A transfer from free cash to the reserve fund. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town transfer $65,000 from free cash in the treasury to account 132, the reserve fund, for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2022.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Requires a simple majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you. Article 9 dealing with a transfer of $200,000 from free cash for the purpose of reducing the tax rate increase. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town transfer $200,000 from free cash in the treasury for the purpose of reducing the expected tax rate increases in the 2023 fiscal year.
I second that.
Article 9 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Simple majority required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. That passes. Article 10. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town take no action under this article.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken on Article 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. No action. Article 11. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town transfer $300,000 from free cash in the treasury in the following amounts to the following stabilization funds. $100,000 to the sewer stabilization fund, $50,000 to the general stabilization fund, $50,000 to the litigation stabilization fund, and $100,000 to the capital stabilization fund.
I second that.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Article 12. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town transfer the sum of $300,000 from free cash in the treasury to the other post-employment benefits trust fund for the purpose of reducing the unfunded actuarial liability of health care and other post-employment benefits.
I second that.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Article 13. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town pass over this article.
I second that.
It's been moved that this article be passed over. Although, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Passes to pass.
I move that the town transfer $203,898 from the capital stabilization fund to the general fund for the purposes of electrical service to the Main Street Cemetery vault, purchasing a sidewalk maintenance machine and related equipment, purchasing a camera and related equipment for sewer, for the sewer system, repaving the basketball court at Pine Grove Park, and purchasing and installing garage doors and motors.
I second that.
Article 19 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. This requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Passes by majority. Thank you. Article 20. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town transfer $64,950 from the capital stabilization fund to the general fund for the purposes of replacing a police cruiser.
I second that.
Article 20 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. This also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes by majority. Article 21. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town transfer $24,834 from capital stabilization count to the general fund for the purchase of equipment for the forest warden, including a set of all-weather tracks for the UTV, to be able to gain access to patients in the woods during any season, also access fires during any season, as there are several structures deep in the forest, 25 sets of personal protective equipment of wildland firefighting, and four fire shelters to protect firefighters from burnover in a wildland fire.
I second that.
Article 21 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick comment on this one. I just want to personally, if I can, Ms. Moderator.
Yep.
Personally, just thank our new fire chief for bringing this article forward and these needs as you evaluated the services for our town. So thank you for taking that step. So welcome to Dalton. Thank you.
Thank you. Article 21 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by, I'm sorry, this does require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Article 22. Mr. Droschine?
I move that the town transfer $20,000 from free cash to the general fund for a forest stewardship plan for sections of the former bardon property or any other town forest land.
I second that.
Article 22 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Hutchison?
Again, I would remind people here that I and the select board are looking for your guidance in this. We hope that a yes vote for this would mean that you're in favor of the town maintaining some of this land for recreational purposes and for a forest stewardship plan and leasing the rest. If you would prefer that the town continue to try to sell the land, again, with the liability that's been, the violation that's been noted, please vote no on this.
Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Richard Hall. One quick question. Is any of this money looking to go towards the property that we have by the High Street? Because that was given to us by Crane a number of years ago, and it's never had any paths or anything done with it. Thank you.
Unfortunately, this is very specific to this property, partly for the reasons that I've mentioned, that we're looking for a very specific message from this vote. I'm happy to work with the Open Space Committee and the Green Committee and any other groups wishing to try to get forest stewardship plans for any other town land.
Anyone else? Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Again, Peter Bardon, 30 Wakona Falls Road. I would like to, once again, urge a no vote on this. You voted, you have voted to allow the town to lease this property, and now they're turning around and asking you for $20,000 out of your pocket, right away. Wake up, people. They're not going to make $20,000 leasing this property or anything to do with recreation in the woodland. They're not going to sell any timber that I know of. They will manage it. There's, you're never going to see that $20,000 come back. Once again, I urge you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. No? Okay. Any other? Yes, Ms. Rose?
As I understood it, this is a question, Cheryl Rose. The previous vote was about transferring control of the property to the select board, and then you have the option to sell or to lease. Yes? So you don't necessarily have to have a forest management plan? You could still transfer the land and not do this? I guess that's the question.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchison?
If the town maintains ownership of the property, we will need a forest stewardship plan to complete our good faith agreement with the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources to make sure that the land is managed in a way which is consistent with best forestry practices.
Mr. Hutchison, do I understand that part of the property is forest property and the rest is suitable for other agriculture?
It's not quite so neatly laid out, especially as some of the land that had been tilled is now grown up into meadow. That's one of the reasons that the previous article allowed 20 years for a lease was to allow whoever did lease that land to get some value for the labor in cleaning it up and making it into good agricultural land, whether orchards or vegetables or whatever the land is best suited for.
That's all. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Art Sanders, South Street. I'm on the Open Space Committee as well with Cheryl. This also says that, or other town forest land. In our, to answer your question about the Pine Street property, we often have many questions from a forestry perspective on that property as we discuss and make plans for future use of open, more open access trail systems there for the public. And so this, having some funds available to seek out that expertise would be greatly appreciated. So I would vote yes for this. Thanks.
Thank you. In the back. Thank you. In the back.
Thank you. Kathy Schnapp, eighty-three-one South Street. I just need a little clarification on what seems to be a contradiction in my mind earlier when we were discussing the previous article about transferring the property into the purview of the select board. Mrs. Rose asked if there would be any kind of tax burden on the residents, and the town manager answered with a no to that. But yet now here we are being asked for twenty thousand dollars to fund this endeavor. Am I missing something?
No, no. I, I thought I had mentioned the twenty thousand dollars when I spoke to that question earlier.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Jim Caffrey, Mountain View Terrace. I just want to point out, forest stewardship plans have a ten-year tenure. So, if you're talking about a twenty-year lease, that would be two forest stewardship plans.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this requires a simple majority. Article twenty-two, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pass. All those opposed by saying no. Okay, we need to count. Okay, all those who are in favor of article twenty-two, please raise your cards. Okay, you can put them down. Thank you. Okay, all those opposed to article twenty-two, please raise your cards. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Article twenty-two, vote yes, fourteen. Vote no, thirty-eight. The article is defeated. Article twenty-three, Mr. Droschene.
I move that the town transfer twenty thousand dollars from the, from free cash to an account for providing the town match for grants.
I second that.
Article twenty-three has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing on CNN, all those in favor of article twenty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Article twenty-four, Mr. Droschene.
I move that the town transfer fifteen thousand dollars from free cash as a grant match for establishing the town's two remaining proposed historical districts.
I second that.
Article twenty-four has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Simple majority. Hearing on CNN, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no.
No.
Thank you. It passes. Article twenty-five, Mr. Diver.
I move that the town revoke its vote in favor of article ten of the two thousand two annual town meeting and establish an Dalton Development Industrial Commission.
I second that.
Article twenty-five has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mottery.
Mr. Hutchison.
This article was proposed by the former chair of the Dalton Industrial Commission, Development and Industrial Commission. Apparently, the commission has suffered from a lack of active membership for the last several years, and the work of the Dalton Redevelopment Authority is similar enough so that the, the members, I believe, have all agreed to move on to the Dalton Redevelopment Authority and continue their, their economic development work there. But since this commission was created by town meeting, it has to be dissolved by town meeting.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Requires simple majority. All those in favor of article twenty-five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Passes. Thank you. Article twenty-six, Mr. Droschene.
I move that the town amend its vote on article eighteen of the June twenty-two, twenty-twenty, yeah, twenty-twenty annual town meeting to include, under the authorization, to borrow two hundred thousand dollars to rewire the IT system of town hall for security purposes. The additional authorization for connecting with fiber optic cable and related equipment the town hall, senior center, highway department, cemetery office, and pine grove facilities.
I second that.
Article twenty-six has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Richard Hall. So, a quick question. Is there any matching funds coming from Spectrum Time Warner as there are cable company within the town? And some of this, some of this communication should come under them, I would think. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchison.
There is, there is not, at this time. I can certainly ask. I, knowing Spectrum, I would not be optimistic as, as to the result, but I, I can certainly ask. This, this borrowing has already been authorized by town meeting. So, this article is just trying to expand that authorization to a broader purpose. But I, I take your point, and we'll follow up on that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Al.
Spectrum will do nothing because we don't even have a license agreement with them. They shouldn't even be operating in town. We ought to shut them down completely. We haven't had a license agreement with Time Warner or Spectrum for at least ten to fifteen years.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes. Mr. Droschene.
As I under, as I understand it, what, what is happening with this is we're trying to provide a fiber optic line between the entities that are listed in the article. What that does, it provides us with a secure loop with each, within each one of those buildings. Presently, they all kind of stand on their own when it comes to IT and information technology to move between the buildings. That's kind, that's what's supposed to take place with this. And, and the previous article didn't allow us to work outside of the confines of the, of the town hall. So, that by, by amending it, it just allows us to fully utilize this, these funds to a better process within the town. In other words, it brings the town from somewhere off in the, I don't know, twentieth century to maybe the twentieth-first century. So, it's kind of a benef, a very beneficial thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms., Mrs. Rose.
Cheryl Rose. Just a quick question. So, am I understanding there's no further authorization of money? This is just expanding what you can use it for?
That is true. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Simple majority is required. All those in favor of article twenty-six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Article twenty-seven, Mr. Droschene.
I move that the town appropriate two hundred fifteen thousand four hundred eleven dollars from available funds to be reimbursed by a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in accordance to chapter ninety, section thirty-four of the Massachusetts General Laws.
I'll second that.
Article twenty-seven has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing on CNN, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you. It passes. Article twenty-nine. Article twenty-nine is a motion by petitioner. Who's going to present that? Mrs. Rose.
Thank you. I move that the town approve a resol, a resolution to support the Massachusetts Fair Share Amendment as written in article twenty-nine on the town warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on article twenty-nine? Mrs. Rose. Sorry, Doctor.
Thank you. Hi. So, the Fair Share Amendment is a ballot question that's going to be on the Massachusetts ballot in November. And we're here today to ask for a town resolution stating that we support this amendment, and I'll explain to you what it is. But first, I just want to, well, I'll explain to you what it is. What it is, is it is asking that we raise the tax rate four percent on your second, third, fourth million and above, right? So, the, in Massachusetts, we have a flat tax. Everybody pays five percent technically, no matter how much money you have. Low income, high income, it's all five percent. The Fair Share Amendment adds an additional four percent, so an additional four cents on the dollar on everything earned on your individual, not business, individual income over one million dollars. So, the first million will be at five percent, and above that would be an additional four cents on a dollar. And very critically, part of this amendment also says that these additional funds will be dedicated to additional funds for public education and public transportation. So, you might think, like, why do we need these towns to have a resolution? We'll just let everybody vote at the ballot. But we are anticipating many millions of dollars to be sippant on, I'll say propaganda, you know, glossy eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheets telling people that some people will pay more tax, and that's enough for many people to go to the polls and vote it down. This is from big-moneyed interests within our state and across the country that want to stop, you know, any rise in any tax, no matter what. You might think that a five percent for everybody seems fair. Why should we penalize the people at the top? But in reality, people at the top have many opportunities to pay less than actually five percent, or the lower tax rate, I'll say, than the people at the bottom, because there are many opportunities to think of ways to redefine your tax status and put your money somewhere that isn't getting taxed and all that, whereas the people, the working people at the bottom who don't have that are paying, you know, the full freight. So, that's a reason why we need this, to make the tax system more fair. As far as money for public roads and public education, our, our educational system is, the funding for it is not keeping up with the expenses. Obviously, kids today, there are many more, you know, the whole digital world has added a huge bunch of expenses. There are many more social services, unfortunately, that many kids require, and the funding just isn't keeping up. And just as an example, in the nineteen eighties, a student could go to UMass and work a full-time job for four years, I mean, a minimum wage job, sorry, a minimum wage job for four years and work their way through school and graduate debt-free. And these days, they graduate for, with an average of thirty thousand dollars in debt. Even Berkshire Community College costs five thousand dollars plus a year to attend. So, you know, these are, these costs are rising. We're putting a lot of burden on our young people when they emerge from school. Even this school, when I took a tour of this building, I learned that this school has no vocational because they didn't have the money for any vocational programs. So, funding is not keeping up with the expenses, and we need that money. As far as transportation, one only needs to look at our roads and understand how many bridges in our state and even in Berkshire County need attention to know that we need more money. So, we need more money for these things, and this is the fairest way to get it. The people at the top have been doing quite well and can well afford the extra four cents on their extra million dollars, you know, each dollar. I think that's mostly what I wanted to tell you. Some people are concerned that the millionaire, oh, this affects about point six percent of Massachusetts taxpayers, about nineteen thousand people. And some people think that they'll move out of our state. But actually, Tufts, was it Tufts? Tufts did a study, no, it was the Mass Policy and Budget Institute, I think, Center. It might have been Tufts. They did a couple of studies on the Fair Share, showing that a Fair Share Amendment helps small businesses, and also it doesn't cause a significant number of people to leave the state. New Jersey recently passed a higher tax rate on their one million, above one million. They already had one for above five million, and now it's higher than ours would be. It's about eleven percent. And when they passed it, I believe in twenty fifteen, they had about thirty-seven billionaires leave the state and three thousand move in. You know, businesses need good roads. They need educated workforce. So, we are helping businesses by passing this tax, and we're asking towns to pass resolutions so that voters will kind of see that this is supported. It's strongly supported by Mass Teachers Association. It was supported overwhelmingly by our select board. It is supported by our Central Berkshire Regional School District. We've gone before them. So, we're asking for the town of Dalton to stand alongside other towns that are passing this resolution to say, yes, we support this. So, when voters maybe go to the polls and are not certain, they feel some more confidence to vote, yes, we need this. This is, this is not hurting regular working people, and it's helping all of us by giving more money to our schools.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Doctor.
We desperately need to invest more in our transportation infrastructure and our education system, public education system. And for those who are concerned about the, what might do negatively to our economy, this will be an enhancement for our economy. Businesses need educated workers. Businesses need roads and bridges to get their goods out. And to those of you who might think this is not a good idea, please tell me how you would propose to get these extra monies if you're not going to tax those who can most afford it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Up in the back.
Joseph Albano, six oh nine South Street. I hope that people will oppose this first item. It is another tax on top of so many other taxes that people pay. If people in this room do not believe that this tax will filter down to them as they age, as their property values increase, and especially for the young people moving into this town, as time goes on and property values, and as I said, incomes rise and their wealth increases, they will be affected by this tax. Our state has collected this tax year over one and a half billion dollars in excess of what they anticipated to collect. On top of that is the influx of the five billion dollars plus from the federal government because of COVID relief. There is plenty of money in this state. As more and more people are employed and unemployment is very low in this state, more and more taxes. People of higher income spend more money. They pay more taxes already from the items that they purchase, the places they go, the things that they do. from the items that they purchase, the places they go, the things that they do. This is passing the buck by our elected officials. They have the power at the State House to levy taxes and to change tax codes. They seem to be refusing to do that because if they do, then their wealthy backers will hold them accountable. So they leave it to us to do their job, in which now they can turn around and say, the people wanted this, and they are no longer accountable to their wealthy donors. If you believe that this money will go to education, what happened to the state lottery, that's going to education. I look at our Central Berkshire Transportation Budget for our school system. That was supposed to have been paid for way back when the system was created by the state. If you believe those hollow promises, then vote yes. I will vote no.
Thank you. Any further discussion down front? Hold on one second. Get a microphone. Right behind you.
Thank you. John McComish, 144 Pine Street. Three things. One, as a previous gentleman alluded to, money is fungible. So if we say the money's going to go to education or wherever it's going to go, yeah, it will, but other monies will come out of education. And money's fungible. It doesn't work that way. The state is doing pretty well financially right now. Just had an opportunity to chat with a couple of our legislators, and we're in pretty good shape for money. And finally, I think we want to be very careful as people and individuals voting to tax somebody else's money. That's their money, and to be taxing their money is, I think that's just a caution, and that's really the legislator's job, is to, legislators are supposed to be the ones to set our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to speak in favor of the Fair Share Amendment and speak to some of the points that have been made. It's really twofold. The first is a tax, a surtax above $1 million of income. And the second is, it will be dedicated, as a result of this constitutional amendment, for public education, pre-K through 12, and also public colleges and universities. It will also be funded for public infrastructure. A point of pride in our community, if not Massachusetts, is our public education system. It runs on dollars, and we are supportive of public education. This will only strengthen it. And we're always complaining about our roads, and this will hopefully see those roads and bridges and walkways and byways be attended to in terms of repair. As far as taxes in this state, we have an inverted tax system. The lowest 20% of people, and I quote the Mass Budget and Policy Office, pay nearly 10% in taxes in local and sales tax and excise taxes. The top 1% pay 7% of their total income. While they pay much more money, they pay a smaller share of their income. That's a fact. The wealthy pay less because sales tax and excise tax are regressive taxes. This will address that. Certainly, in light of the federal tax cut that was made in 2017, the wealthiest are benefiting tremendously. The poorest are not. So I would strongly support this measure. And as far as trickling down, this will take effect January 1 of next year. It will be adjusted for inflation. And as a point of reference, this is an income tax, not a wealth tax, an income tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Nado.
Yeah, me again. The problem with this tax is, how many people do you have here? And this is supposed to represent the feelings of the Town of Dalton? This item should have been as a non-binding referendum on our town meeting, our vote next Monday.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose.
Thank you. I wanted to respond to a couple of concerns. One was that our legislators haven't voted on this. So because it is a change to the tax code, it requires a change to our state constitution. That means it has to pass our legislators two times and then go to the public. And it has passed two times. And this last time, it passed our legislators close to 80% majority. Our legislators want this tax. Another, and Tony mentioned that the amount is indexed to inflation, so that as $1 million isn't $1 million today, the number, the cutoff, would be rising. So that is not an issue. The issue of fungibility was raised. Oh, we'll give more money, and it's supposed to go for education and transportation, and then they'll take that budget and move it somewhere else. And what I can say to you is about the huge effort that has taken to bring this to our state and to get it on our ballot. And there will be many eyes watching to see how this goes, and the wording will be enshrined in our constitution, that this is supposed to be additional monies for public education and transportation. So if our legislators, who voted for this overwhelmingly, attempted to not do what they voted for and what the people asked for, there will definitely be a lawsuit, and the fact that the words are enshrined in our constitution, they will certainly win. So this is a way to get the money and direct it to those two things, and the wording was very carefully scrutinized. If we don't, we need this money. Some have proposed regressive taxes, the ways to raise money. If you don't raise money by taxing the uber wealthy a little more, maybe we'll raise the sales tax, maybe we'll raise the gas tax. The money has to come from somewhere if we're going to maintain our roads and continue to have quality education in our state. So this, I believe, and I hope you do too, that this is the fairest way to raise the money, and we need the money, so we should support it.
Thank you. Dr. Rose.
One more additional point. This money would be sustainable year after year after year. This is not a one-off like the ARPA is, to the point of the gentleman in the back. The American Rescue Plan is giving money to states, and we benefit by that for one year only, but we want to be able to repair our roads and bridges every single year. And by the way, there are about 500 bridges in our state that are in desperate need of repair. And for those of us who drive on that bridge on Holmes Road, it's been like two years, and it's still a single lane, and it's going to take months till that's fixed. And how about those potholes on the way coming over here today? So this would be sustainable money. It would sustain education year after year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kathy Schnapp, 831 South Street. Perhaps we should start addressing things at the root cause. And if we want to be fair about something, why don't we address the issue of the cost of higher education? It's risen astronomically. I should know. I put three kids through college, and I don't hear anybody talking about that. So before we start singling people out and asking for more of their money, I think we need to be more responsible with the money that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Make a motion to end debate. I think we have a lot of education. I'd like to move that motion to end the debate and take a vote.
It's a motion to end debate. Is there a second? All those in favor of ending debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Okay, Article 29, simple majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no.
No.
You're killing me here. Okay, we need a count. Almost there. Just the two of you? Okay, all right. So everybody that's in favor, raise your card. Everybody in favor of Article 29. Okay, all those who are opposed to Article 29, raise your cards. Okay, thank you. Article 29, yes votes 34, no 13. Article passes. Believe it or not, Article 30, Mr. Dever.
Thank you. Before I read the motion, I just want to thank you all for attending tonight. We had a great informational session a week ago and then tonight, so thank you for the engagement. And I'll put out a shameless plug. We have a number of committees in town, so we're still looking for volunteers. If you want to participate and engage in town, feel free. Just give Alyssa a call. Where's Alyssa? She's right over there. And thank you to our moderator for moderating an excellent town meeting tonight. Thank you again for everyone's participation. So with that, I move the town meeting recess until Monday, May 9, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to meet in the Dalton Community House to choose and elect the following town officers and determination of such other matters as are by law required to be determined by ballot as written in the Town Warrant.
Second.
Article 30 has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.